This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Jeremy Ward to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we just pray you today for the blessings of your life, that you receive the sunshine, that you see the freedom that you put in our lives. I pray this morning that you bless this council with your wisdom, that you need to cross for our kids, among others, all time, and pray this in here.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on January 27.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of January 23 through the 29.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, ma'am.
How to today, the first one is 2-1-1 Day, First Call for Help. Could Susan Carter come up, please?
Anybody with you?
Joan.
I don't know if Joan is getting this over or not.
Whereas 2-1-1 was first established in 1971 as the Anchor Program to provide Gadsden and Etowah County residents access to human services in their community. The Anchor Program was later known as First Call for Help and connected about 6,000 callers per year to community resources. In 2006, First Call for Help joined a network of 2-1-1 call centers across the state of Alabama as an easy-to-remember toll-free number that connects callers to critical health and human services available in their community 24 hours a day, seven days a week. 2-1-1 First Call for Help maintains the only comprehensive health and human services resource database accessible by the 2-1-1 dial code with free access to our community resources through information and referral. 2-1-1 First Call for Help answered 10,542 calls in 2014, providing 16,531 resource referrals throughout Gadsden and Etowah County by partnering with over 500 local, regional, state, and national agencies to help improve the quality of life for our residents. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, the Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim February the 11th of 2015 as 2-1-1 Day, First Call for Help, a program of United Way in Etowah County.
Since 1971, the Anchor Program began offering information and referral services to the citizens of Etowah County. In 2014, as Mayor Gotten said, we answered over 10,000 phone calls, given out over 16,000 referrals. I think back over the years since I've been with 2-1-1 First Call for Help, I think of the callers that we've assisted. I know without a doubt there have been people's lives who have been changed because we have this service in our community, and I think it makes our community a stronger community that we have this. I think we've answered around 80,000 phone calls in the years that we've been answering calls for assistance in our community, and we're glad to be a part of this community. We live in a wonderful community, and we thank you for your support. Thank you.
The next one is, is Ray Smith here or somebody that's taking his place? He must be making a loan. Whereas while progress has been significant in reducing deaths from heart disease, it is still the number-one killer both for women and men. Cardiovascular diseases are the nation's leading cause of death, and the costliest diseases with direct and indirect costs estimated to be more than $315.4 billion. More than 787,000 people in the U.S. died from heart disease, stroke, or other cardiovascular diseases in 2010, or about one out of every three deaths in America. About 2,150 people die from cardiovascular diseases each day, accounting for about one death every 40 seconds. The American Heart Association's 2020 Impact Goal seeks to improve cardiovascular health of all Americans by 20% while reducing deaths from cardiovascular diseases and stroke by 20% through research, population, and community-level interventions, public health, and policy measures. Efforts of the American Heart Association encourage citizens to help save lives by calling 911 if symptoms occur, become trained CPR, and encourage comprehensive automated external defibrillator programs in their communities. The American Heart Association is celebrating February 2015 as American Heart Month and promoting education and awareness by encouraging citizens to learn the warning signs of heart attack and stroke. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, in recognition of the importance of ongoing fight against heart disease, do hereby proclaim February 2015 to be American Heart Month in the City of Gadsden, and urge all citizens to recognize the critical importance of tools and skills that will increase survival rates from cardiac arrest. By incorporating these tools into aggressive programs, we can save thousands of lives each year. I can give you a little personal history on heart issues, and I think checkups are the main thing that you need to watch. My dad had a heart attack at 39 in 1963. I was a senior in high school. He had four in 11 years and died at 50 in 1973. And, of course, he was a smoker. I never smoked, but back then, all they gave you was blood thinner and a diet. There was no stents or bypass. So anyway, when he passed away, Dr. Scott Vance, who was a local doctor, and he saw heart patients, but I'm not sure he was really a heart specialist, he told me I needed to be checked. I was 27 and playing all kinds of sports in great shape, and my cholesterol triglycerides were about 1,000. And so diet tab was the only diet drink, which I pretty much went to water, and corn oil. Olive oil wasn't real popular back then, but corn oil would break up the fat. They told me that would break up the fat in your arteries. And so I don't care what I ate, even if I got off my diet and ate pizza, I would put a little corn oil on it. But anyway, and I would go periodically once a year. If it was a little high, then it would get it back down, but he used to tell me I had the blood of a Chinese peasant. And I stayed on that rigidly for years and years and years. I would always get the checkups. I'm 59 and a half. I was in Gulf Shores and rode a bicycle eight mile and went up 80-something, 90 stairs. I was not even out of breath. Two days later, I had a light heart attack. Ended up with two stents in Mobile, and six months later, I had to have bypass because I had hardened the arteries into the arteries, which is hereditary. And that's why it just pays if it's in your family or your grandparents or uncles or aunts. My mother's got a couple of sisters that has high blood pressure, and their daughters and my sister have it as well. So anything that's in your family, you better check on it because you can have issues with it, but you can prevent it. And I was very fortunate, didn't have any damage or nothing, so I'm still kicking today, but I have bypass 10 years ago. But heart disease is really, and if you're having pains, don't not go and get it checked. I mean, that's what it's for. When you go to the emergency room, they'll put you right in there to be checked on pretty quick because you just can't mess around with it. Thank you.
I guess we take it back up and come to it.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, when Frankie says you've got a heart of stone, I know exactly what he's talking about. I likewise have some, and I think many of us can share instances, but my grandfather, anybody that knows anything about me knows that that was probably one of the most important people in my life. And my grandfather died of a heart attack. He actually suffered three before he died, and he was 86-years-old, and he was probably in better shape than most 20-year-olds, but he had cardiac issues that he managed pretty much his entire life. And so that's something that I pay very close attention to. I put my money where my mouth is because I give to the American Heart Association every year because those are things that are very near and dear to me, and that money goes towards, obviously, research and some other things to help battle that. But I think those are some very good points that the mayor made. You know, people say a lot about what we've, the Affordable Care Act, or what we've affectionately come to know as Obamacare, but one of the key elements of the Affordable Care Act is preventative medicine or preventative treatment. And preventative medicine can help manage a lot of those things that the mayor pointed out, so very good point. Okay, I'm finished business. We have none today. This is the time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing, allow anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 519 Allen Street in District 1, the State of Alabama, and Marion Burnett being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started our case in May of 2013. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I'm sorry, what's the pleasure of the council?
I had an opportunity to view this property myself, and it should have been torn down yesterday. I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 302 Lewis Street in District 1, the State of Alabama, and William Wallace being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in May of 2013. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 710 Brookside Drive in District 3, James and Lula Davis being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case also in May of 2013. There have been no improvements to the property. There was a building permit taken out in June of 2013. No improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Justex Systems. This is for promotional examinations and related services and products for the physicians of Sergeant and Lieutenant in the Police Department, and the cost is estimated to be $6,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with SNME. This is for cleanup of 4.2 acres on the east bank of the Cusa River, including sampling and soil analysis, remediation and soil management plan modification, and Alabama Department of Environmental Management review fee. This cost is $25,060. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
That's the property straight across from City Hall. You can see where it's been cleared. It was bought before we got in office. Never was really like a dump, dump officially, but it was a place where people left a lot of things, and we're doing some initial things to make sure everything's going to be okay or whatever we need to do to clean it up. It's 4.3 acres.
4.3, okay. Is there any additional discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 14 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Aldat. This is for installation of roadway lighting on Airport Road at Ira Gray Drive. This is a federally funded project, and the city agrees to assume maintenance. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Aldat, and this is for maintenance of the previously noted project. It's the roadway lighting for, again, Airport Road at Ira Gray Drive. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion?
It's just another project out there to enhance our airport. Have a lot of activity going on, and we're hoping there are going to be some more in the near future, so this is going to help the whole situation. Yeah. All right. I saw too, Mayor, I think where they've tearing down the old Dixie Pacific building. I was out there yesterday. I think that's probably going to be an asset to us right there, too, on what they're going to put in there, but they're coming along pretty good tearing that building down. Yeah, the owner is the one who's tearing it down, too. He does do the work down the street, but he's got some feelers out. He wants to make it, I think, pretty much commercial, and has got some prospects, I think, already. He's going to fix it, enter it from 77 in the front there himself, so I think that may be a plus out there. That's probably a good piece of property right there. I also too, with the new lighting we're putting close to the airport, close to all those restaurants there. District 6 really needs some more restaurants and stuff like that, so I appreciate that right there.
Okay, any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Aldat. This is for the bridge replacement project on South 11th Street over Black Creek. This is a Gadsden-Etowah MPO project that will be 80% funded by federal funds with a 20% local match. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I think this is a bridge that's long overdue in South Side area, so this is something that's a positive for Gadsden and also for that particular area.
All right, any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Do we have any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have several. The first one has to do with the, I ask for unanimous consent for a resolution authorizing agreement with S&amp;M for their environmental service for storm-water monitoring, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I would like for Mr. Jeremy Ward to elaborate a little bit on this so that there can be a general understanding to the public.
This is monitoring that's required by our Phase 2 permit that's through a dam, and this is monitoring throughout the county that helps us understand whether our control measures are working to lower the phosphorus in the river, which we're required to do. This is, even though the City of Gadsden is agreeing to it, this is a shared cost between us and other entities around, but it helps us meet our permit requirement.
All right, any more discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, this is, I ask for unanimous consent for this resolution, and this is a continuation of what Mr. Ward just talked about, but this has to do with the cooperative agreement between Etowah County Commission, City of South Side, City of Rainbow City, City of Hope's Blood, City of Atala, and the City of Glencoe for the preparation of the storm-water management plan.
Second.
I move for adoption.
Second.
I want to get unanimous consent.
All right, so a motion has been made to consider this today, and second, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I now move for adoption.
Okay, any discussion?
I'll leave him second.
All right, there's no more discussion, clerk?
Yeah, I was trying to get it out of the way real fast.
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, do we have any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two, please. The first one's legal department document 2015/026. I'd ask for unanimous consent, please, this resolution accepting conveyance of property from Sentia D. Pierce located at 2708 Hickory Street in District 6.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion to consider and second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, this is a piece of property here that's beyond repair, and Ms. Pierce is moving, and she just wanted to freshly give this piece of property to the city. If I'm not mistaken, there's a little ditch that runs beside it, and we need to probably try to give us some easement to clean out that ditch, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, if there's no additional discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any additional?
Yes, I have one other item that I'm asking for unanimous consent for a resolution for changing order for MacArthur Construction Company for owner's protected liability insurance in the amount of $2,220.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Mr. President, I have one more. I'd ask for unanimous consent, please. It's legal, come from legal department 2015/031. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with B. Craig Lipsen, Architect LSC, for the renovation repairs to the Alabama Sea Library on 26th and Megan Boulevard.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I failed to say that we're on, this is budget for $15,180 down there. We talked about it upstairs. We brought a little piece of history to the mayor, made him kind of remember stuff when he used to go down there. There's a wall at Alabama Sea Library. Tells how old he is, too. There's a wall sitting around the library there. People back in the 50s and 60s when he was growing up would go down there and trade knives and with each other, and that's just something that went on back in those days. And he told us upstairs that he finally sold off his knives. I really don't know if he sold them or those guys took them away from him or beat them out of it, but he don't have any pocket knives to say.
The main thing I remember about that building was going in, and it was a post office, and you could pay your water bill and your gas bill and the library, all in the same building.
You know, at one time, back in those days when I was a kid, you're quite older than me, but we wouldn't go that far, but I remember going down there with my parents, and Wall Street down there and 26th Street, all down there was a booming little community. And we used to buy all of our groceries down there. It was two or three grocery stores. There was clothing stores, drug stores, a dentist, a barber's, two or three barber shops. You could shine your shoes. I think there was a hardware store down there, a couple hardware stores. It was just, you know, it was just amazing how it used to be back in those days. Just brings back old memories just thinking about all that.
Councilman Cannon likes to say I'm older than him, but when I was in the first grade, he was driving a screw bus. That pretty much takes care of it.
He used to be the one that told everyone when I was in a, he used to be the one that told everybody when he was my teacher in junior high, he used to paddle me, so I'm not going any further than that.
Okay, any more gut punches?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, is there any more new business? All right, department reports, committees, boards, chief?
The department just wants to announce today that on our record systems, that there will be a, all the records have been issued revenue stickers will be in the windshields. If that sticker is not in the windshield, that record will not be allowed to work the rig. So just to let everybody know about that, that we'll be enforcing that starting today.
Okay, thank you, chief. Mr. Ward?
I've been asked to give updates on two of our projects going on. One of them is the gas company work on East Broad Street. They approached us a few months ago about replacing an aging line due to a fiber optic cable on one side and the sewer on the other. We were unable to get the gas behind the curb as we normally try to do, so we did allow them to cut the lane. If you've been down through there, you've probably noticed that. But as of today, all the eight-inch main has been laid except for a small section along George Wallace Drive in front of Wallace Hall. That is expected to be finished in the next week, and they're going to begin laying in the services to the house next week. And we've also agreed to allow them to put a two-inch line from Payton Ridge to Knight Street to go ahead and tie the system all together. Most of that work was Most of that work will happen behind the curb. The big question that we've been getting is about the paving in that lane. As part of our permit, the gas company agreed to repave that lane that has the cut. They'll come in and mill out an inch and a half and then come back and lay an inch and a half asphalt back in that particular lane. Anywhere where they have to cut all the way across the road, they're gonna be required to mill out a larger section so that it doesn't settle as much. But all that is either gonna be done by their contractor or there is the possibility to putting it under our resurfacing project, just depending on how they choose to approach us on that. The estimated time for them to finish their work as far as putting in the lines is three or four more weeks. It's possible after that we'll begin the negotiations on getting that lane repaved. The other project is our actual resurfacing project that we're doing this year. Just wanted to let you know, we have 44 of the 74 streets finished. That's about 59% of our project done that way. If you wanted to break it down by how the money was being paid, 21 of 28 community development streets have been finished, five of the seven water department streets have been finished, and 18 of the 39 regular resurfacing streets have been finished. Our major items of work, which is our wearing surface and our milling, our wearing surface, we've laid 14,406.81 tons of mix this year. That's 81% of what we have set up to lay and we milled 125,776 square yards of paving, which is 88%. And if you want to know that in money, we've, as of the invoice that we're processing now, it'd be $1.4 million out of the $2.2 that we're, we're set up to do, which is 62% of our payment has gone out at this time. But that, that kind of catches you up where we are on those two streets.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
The first project, where you talked about the paving on East Broad and you said that they're gonna pave the lane that they tore up, that's just on one side, won't that make the whole street uneven?
Now, what they'll do is actually come in and mill the street, so we'll drop the level an inch and a half and then they'll come back and put an inch and a half in, so it'll be the same level all the way across.
Okay.
Mr. President, I have one more question for Jeremy. Jeremy, how would that affect the residential gas customers in this cold weather? Would any of them be without gas if they have gas for heat?
According-
And if it is, how long would the timeframe be for them?
According to the, the gas company, they're gonna try to schedule so that there's limited interruption, but one of the reasons they're, they're doing this project is to enhance in cold weather. The aging line does bust when it gets cold and this, this will keep that from happening.
Mr. President, I have a question. On turn time, where they did that repiping over there, that road is terrible, is that on the list to resurface for the gas company?
Not for the gas company, that was under a previous permit. The, some of the patches that are over there are gas companies, other are water works. So there's, there's two different, two different patching items over there that you see, but that is not part of the gas company to repave.
I mean, how can you tear up a street and not fix it back?
We, we don't have a ordinance as far as how much you have to, to cut, to put back, that you have to pave the whole street. That is something that we, we need to work on to where when you get a certain percentage of cuts, you automatically pave the street back, but we don't have that at this time, so that didn't fall under the permit, but East Broad Street was enough of a cut that we, we were able to negotiate the repave of it.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Well, I got a question on that.
Go ahead.
So neither the water department or the other company, gas company, is gonna repave it, so is the city gonna repave it?
Turn time?
What he's talking about, 'cause we have some of those in District 3 also.
It is not on our present list. It can be added to our request list for our next paving project and if any other councilmen have a street that they want us to look at, they can notify me and we'll put it on that request list and then when we do all of our measuring, we'll measure it and quantify the cuts and what needs to be done.
Okay, okay.
All right, thanks again, Jeremy. We're now to, down to remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor?
I'd just like to say that every year, there's more red tape. I mean, everybody is some entity that you gotta do this or that and I know some things are good, but if you wonder why things go on and on and on, it's because of all the hoops that we have to jump to, through to do about any project we try to do now. You know, we have the Indiana bats to deal with and a leather leaf flower and just, Jeremy can even tell you a lot more than I can, but anyway, we're always working on it, but it just may not happen as fast as we'd like for it to and we have a list of projects probably about this long, don't we, Jeremy? That we're working on, it's just a process, you just have to keep digging and digging and digging till you can get them done, so we appreciate everybody's patience when we're doing something. Thanks.
Councilman Toles?
I'd like to first say to the other councilmen, I said, we need to step up our game, 'cause District 6 seems to be getting everything, so we need to talk a little more and step up. If not, we're gonna be left out. The other thing is the, when they talked about the heart, on February the 10th, and the tickets may already be sold, but there's a go red and that's support of the Heart Association that the Gaston Regional Hospital always put on and so most of them are just ladies, but I'm sure if a man show up, they'll take your money also, but that's a good thing to support. Also, my alma mater president will be at Gaston City High School on Friday, 8:00 AM or 8:15 and they're gonna be giving out scholarships to students at the high school.
Good, Mr. Ackles?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Councilman Worthy?
I have two items. Thursday at 5 o'clock, five, sorry, 5:30 at Calver, we will have our District 3 community meeting and then Wednesday at 4 o'clock, we will have a community planning meeting for the Tuscaloosa Avenue area. So if anyone'd like to come out to, to either one, I appreciate if you come. Thank you, or both.
Okay, Councilman Billingsley?
On Monday of next week, I'll have a, a community reaction meeting at Banks Park down in South Gaston. It'll be at 5, 5:00 in the afternoon, so everybody's urged to come out. I also would like to say that I've been approached by two or three different people about why are we tearing down so many houses? These houses are very, are in, it's in very, very bad shape and the building department gives us a list each month of how many that are in bad shape and anybody that owns these houses will have ample time to fix them up. I mean, these houses are in terrible condition, police having to go out and vandalism and all kinds of drug activity and things like that. They're not just torn down haphazardly, a lot of preparation goes into this. So I would like for people to understand it's just not, we're just not tearing down people's houses. These houses have been in bad shape 10, 12 years, am I right? At least that many. So we, we're not just destroying the houses, but they're, they're, the police department has problem with them, there's an eyesore in your neighborhood, 'cause I've got some on my street. So don't, don't jump on us about tearing houses down because most of them, in fact, I say all of them, need tearing down. That's all I have.
Councilman Cannon?
Councilman Billingsley forgot to, to say once that the building department comes out and decides that your houses are, need to be condemned, you have 120 days to bring that house up to code right then. All you gotta do is come and get a permit, start working on it, bring it up to code and, you know, it's done. We've got people that, the building department goes out there, condemns their house, we never see them. Two or three years go by and we finally get it up here before the council, then they show up and say, oh, I'm gonna start working on your house. Where was you at the year or two years before that when it was condemned? What was going on then? Your problem, what was your problem, what worked on your house then? And you ask all of them and they have no answer, you know? Well, we thought we had more time. You know, you don't have time, you know, two or three years, that's long enough, guys. Eight months is long enough. You got 120 days for when he puts it on there to come and see him and talk to him and see what's going on and fix your house up. I'm gonna get off that soap opera because I've been on that way too long. I just want to say last night we had District 6 meeting at Ed Community Center, it was a good meeting. In May, we're gonna have a rock party for all of District 6. It'll be a big cookout, everyone's welcome to come. I'll give you the time and date, next month they'll have that. There'll be music, free food, just come out, enjoy everybody in District 6 and see what your neighbors have got to say. That's all I got.
Councilman Reed?
Since I don't have anything to say, I thought maybe I'd give my opinion on the Super Bowl. Sherman, I still think, I was happy the way it came out, but if they'd have just give Lynch the ball, my team would've lost and that's all I got to say on it.
Can I say something, that little guy who intercepted the pass and saved the game?
Yes, say that.
Absolutely. A walk-on free agent, he is a graduate of, it's West Alabama now, but for I went to graduate school in Coates one year, Livingston down below Tuscaloosa and that just thrilled my heart for him, that was just great. He was able, he, he will be a legend the rest of his life if he never does anything else on that island.
He actually is better than the Heisman, y'all know true.
That's right. I was asked by Miss Bostick who works hard on the Sixth Street Cemetery, the Gaston City High School is gonna help them catalog all the cards and if any of the council wants to give a little discretionary money to help with that situation, just let her have a know. Thank you.
All right.
I did have a couple of quick comments. The WMGJ Radio will be conducting its annual UNCF Radio-Thon on Saturday this week, of this week, so that's Saturday, the 7th, I believe, and that's gonna be pretty much all day that they'll be there.
All right. So 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the, again, at WMGJ Radio, radio station, that's the UNCF Radio-Thon.
I wanted to just kind of highlight on something that I read regarding payday loans and y'all know historically, I've, haven't been, haven't been shy about my, my opinions of the lack of contribution that, that those entities make to, to our communities. I was pleased to, to find out that the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, Bureau, which is an arm of the federal government, is gonna actually be pushing them a little, a little, a little harder. Now, it's very disappointing to see that the state wasn't really contributing at a high level in that, but, but it's good to see the feds getting involved and while they won't be capping interest rates, which is what a lot of us would like to see, what they will be doing more than likely is really driving an agenda that will make it feasible for these people to actually repay the loans once they get in them. You know, that's prob, that's the biggest scare right now is that once these folks get in these loans, these revolving loans, they, they can't escape them, they can't get out of them, so, so again, so it'll be interesting, pay, pay close attention to that, you know, on your own and please watch that very closely because we'd really like to see something good come out of that. There will be a panel discussion this afternoon at 5:00 PM at the Gaston Public Library. It's one of their, of the many events that they're gonna be having as, in celebration of Black History Month and me and Councilwoman Toles and Councilman Worthy and Councilman Billingsley, I think, will be a part of that panel, so if you are available and can, can come support that, please do. I think it'll be a good, good discussion and a, and a good event and I do, you know, I, I looked at the slate of events that the library has planned and, and they have a very, very, very impressive slate of events. I think this may be the, the least of the little ones, but, but this is a good, again, this is a good event nonetheless. I think one of the things that caught my attention is there's gonna be a soul food competition that they're gonna have there. I wish I could've been one of the judges, but I didn't get so lucky there. The last, the last item that I have here is we will be having a District 2 community meeting on Saturday, February 7th at 10:00 AM and the meeting will be held this time at New Destiny Christian Church located at 201 Goldenrod Avenue. Wanted to try a private location this time to maybe drive some additional participation and to avoid that city, city overtime. We have our, whenever we have a Saturday meeting at our community center, sometimes we have to pay our folks overtime to work that sixth workday, so, so it's good sometimes to avoid that expense and, and increase the level of access by having it at a pri- private, private building, so New Destiny stepped up and they were very, very willing to help us with that. So again, we look forward to seeing everybody come out. We generally try to meet for about an hour, maybe an hour and a half and, and share on some of the things that we've gone over in our, in our council meetings. Okay, is there anything else? I entertain a motion that we adjourned.
So moved. Second.